All right, everyone. Good evening. It is 7:00 PM and I would like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Folks, will you please call roll? Here.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carpenter Davis.
Here.
Chelsea.
Here.
Thank you. So, in honor of our audience members tonight, I think we are going to slightly reshuffle the order of our agenda. And we're going to first go through our special presentations before we go into our public hearing. So our first, we have three special presentations this evening. And our first one is a special presentation from the Mission Marlins Swim Club. Mr. Almany, would you please introduce our guests?
Thank you, Councilmember Boltinghouse and council. I'm pleased to introduce the Mission Marlins, as well as Katie Deering, who will be speaking on their behalf and sharing with us a 2024 season recap. Katie?
And Katie, before you get started, just for the benefit of everyone here, we do have Mayor Flora and Councilmember Rehird are online virtually. So they're, they're gonna enjoy your presentation as well.
Get them all situated. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. It's an honor to be here. I look forward to doing this every year. My name is Katie Darian. I'm the head coach of the Mission Marlin Swim Club. This was my second year as head coach, but I've been a member of the Marlins organization since I was seven years old. Growing up in Overland Park and now living in Gardner. Also with me tonight are some of our beloved Mission Marlins families and swimmers, and a member of our coaching staff who wanted to help share with you the excitement of our season. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you. Our team values the relationship we have so much with the City of Mission and the Parks and Rec Department. We start working together to make sure the season runs smoothly in January and our swim program would not be possible without the support we have from you. So as we celebrate another very successful season, we wanted to share the excitement with you. A little recap of our 2024 season, our coaching staff consisted of myself, Jennifer Sliker, Kevin Hannan, Marion Ruffin, and Molly Kate Ford. Together, we've been involved in the Marlins organization either as swimmers or coaches for 75 years, cohesively together. Pretty cool that all of us were brought up in the Marlins organization and are now coaches. And it just goes to show the impact that the team has and that this community has on so many people. We had 218 swimmers ranging in age from five to 18 years old. Some live as close as a block or two away within walking distance, some are in South Overland Park, Leewood, and surrounding areas. And then we have one family who comes from Overbrook, Kansas. If you don't know where that is, it's an hour and 10 minutes one way that come to participate in our team. So we were undefeated in the regular season going into championships. We had four weeks of dual meets and went undefeated in all of those. As a team, we concluded championships with three first place finishes in our novice division. Who's got that one? Novice Division, we placed first by 186 points. Our Level Two Division was first by an amazing 369 points. And then we edged out last year's A Division Champions by seven points this summer in RA Division, which is the fastest division in our league. Championships also allow the league to highlight swimmers in different ways as well with the high point winners. And that recognizes swimmers who score the most points individually for their team within their age group. So tonight I have a couple of them sporting their medals as high point winners this year and one from last year. But over the span of the two days of championships, there were 36 winners out of a possible 54 that came from the Mission Marlins. So, which is absolutely incredible. Again, some of them are here with me tonight. We wrap up the season with team awards and wanted to share with you some of those special recipients. I think what makes our team the most special is our kids, these kids right here. They bring so much dedication, love, resilience, community, and spirit to this team. And at the end of our very short seven weeks, we like to try to recognize that. So we have three team awards. One is called the Alyssa Ruffin Award. She was a swimmer and a coach for many years. I took over for her. She, the Marlins, had been a member, a part of her life for over 40 years. Then there was John Comstock Award. He was the longtime coach during, I believe, almost all of Sylvester Powell's entirety as mayor. And then we have the Sylvester Powell Jr. Award. The Alyssa Ruffin and John Comstock Award are the two awards that recognize a Tuesday night swimmer, which is 10 and under and 11-year-old and up, which is our Thursday night swimmer that represent all of those things, the resilience, the spirit, the community, all of those things. The Alyssa Ruffin Award this year was Charlie Gibson. She is on that trophy. And then Jonathan Guilde is on that trophy. And then last, we have the Sylvester Powell Award. As you know, he was the former mayor. So when he retired and when our head coach, John Comstock retired, John was our first recipient of that award. And now it goes to parents or volunteers, sometimes families that just we feel like go above and beyond the way Sylvester Powell did for our team. And this year, we recognized Chrisandra and Declan Riedzel. So our team creates so many amazing memories and moments for the kids. I asked a few of them if they wanted to share their favorite memory from the summer. Anybody? Go for it.
How does staff teach me how, how do you get better at swimming in my shoes?
Spending time with my friends every day of the summer.
So mine was stands out immensely, getting punked by the coaching staff. Before championships, we did a TikTok viral TikTok video and I ended up getting punked, which ended up with me being dumped on by a bucket of water. So if you'd like to partake in that entertainment, it is on our social media. But we really know how important it is to teach these kids the life skill of being able to swim, but we also try to have fun while doing it. So we love highlighting those moments. Our team truly is something special. It stands out from the other area swim teams for so many reasons. And I think one of the reasons is how inviting the mission community is for so many people, which brings people this direction from all over. Especially our coaching staff, three of us commuting from Alata, Spring Hill, and Gardner. Families and the dedication that we have from everyone encompassing is just immeasurable. So thank you again for allowing us to be here tonight. We are so incredibly proud of all of these kids and those that couldn't be here today as Marlins and our success this season. So. Yes, Debbie.
Do we have any parents in the audience? Because we know that parents make a great deal of how their kids.
Yes, we do. And us as a team couldn't do what we do without them, since every meet we have is personally run by parent volunteers. So our parents are also immeasurable and priceless. So, thank you so very much. Exactly.
All right. Our second special presentation this evening is Recognizing Diaper Needs Awareness Week 2024. For the past few years, Mission has observed this week by issuing a proclamation to raise awareness of the widespread need for diapers to improve the health and welfare of infants and toddlers. In the Kansas City area, 22,000 children need diaper assistance every year. Diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, and a monthly supply can cost on average $100 or as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Families living in the urban core without access to big box or warehouse stores must pay a premium at their corner store or local market. We encourage the community to support this important effort and provide relief to those by donating to the Happy Bottoms Diaper Bank here in Kansas City.
Councilmember Boltinghouse, if I might. I, you'll see in the back of the room, the Tower of Diapers. I, this is an important cause to me each year, and so I would challenge anybody who's interested to make a donation here at City Hall or at the Community Center between now and the end of the month. And we'll gather all of that up and deliver it to Happy Bottoms.
Thank you, Laura. Yes, go ahead, Leah.
As many of you know, I work in the foster care system and actually Happy Bottoms is one of my duties. I was doing Happy Bottoms stuff all day today, but it makes a huge difference in, in our programs because oftentimes we have relatives, let's say aunts, uncles, sometimes siblings, grandparents who take in kids at the last minute to prevent them from going into a foster home. So they become the foster family. And many of them don't have the budget to, you know, add in mouths to feed and diapers and clothing and all of that. So Happy Bottoms is a huge help to those families because as, as, as is said, they're super expensive to buy. And Happy Bottoms is one of the best organizations because it really helps not only foster kids, but also low-income children all over the city. It's an amazing program.
Sharing, Councilmember. All right. And then I think we will now move into our final special presentation this evening, and that is Recognizing Constitution Week here in Mission. The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. Constitution Week is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through the 23rd to commemorate its history importance and bring attention to how it still serves us today. The aims of the Constitution Week celebration are emphasizing citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, informing people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and foundation for our way of life, and encouraging the study of the historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. We welcome members of the Shawnee Mission Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to accept this proclamation. All right. Thank you for letting us reshuffle the order there to recognize our proclamations. We will now revert to our public hearing, which was the first item on our agenda this evening. The let's see, this hearing is about the Lanes at Mission Bowl Phase Two Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan and the Split of Tiff District Number Three B. This public hearing is continued from the August 21st, 2024 City Council Meeting. And first, we will hear from City Administrator Laura Smith. Following her presentation, if any members of the public would like to comment on the item, that would be the time.
Thank you. As has been mentioned, we initially opened this public hearing on the Lanes at Mission Bowl Phase Two Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan and the Split of Tiff District Number Three B at the August 21st City Council Meeting, at which time we heard from the developer, the city's financial advisor, Mr. Bruce Kimmel with ELS, who is also online with us this evening, as well as Mr. Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council. We also have Mr. Banks Floodman, the developer of this project here with us this evening. I didn't prepare a formal presentation because you've heard it, I think, two times prior to this. But as you are aware, this is, I'll just kind of hit the highlights. This would be Phase Two to the Phase One project, which is located on Martway on the former Mission Bowl project site. This would add 96 units immediately to the east with associated parking and other amenities. We have negotiated a draft redevelopment agreement that essentially contains the same terms as were negotiated in the first phase of the project, which includes dedicating 20% of the units as attainable housing, which would be at 60% of the area median income. And I believe in Phase Two, that equates to 19 units, and then also achieving at least a LEED Silver Certification and the construction of the building. So there's an ordinance following the close of the public hearing. There is an ordinance that the council will consider, which will accomplish approval of the redevelopment agreement, the split of the Tiff District, and approval of the Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. There's a second agenda item, which is a resolution of intent to issue IRBs. The IRBs themselves would be issued at the conclusion of the project. But this is the mechanism that allows the developer to take advantage of a sales tax exemption on construction materials. So I'd be happy to answer questions. Again, Mr. Wimpy, Mr. Kimmel are here, and Mr. Floodman.
Are there any questions for Flora or anyone else? Yes, Debbie.
With the inclusion of additional parking spaces as well, this would be a perfect opportunity, I'm just making this comment for the record, to put pervious parking in to alleviate our stormwater problem as we've witnessed in the past. Brought this up several times, and I know sometimes it's already gone through and the contract's already been signed and i's dotted and t's crossed, but I think it's a great opportunity for the city to start engaging in some environmental production that will actually will see benefit from relative to stormwater.
And I appreciate that. And I know you have raised that issue several times. I think in this project, and I don't have the final development plan right in front of me, the majority of the parking associated with is going to be podium parking underneath the building. And I think one of the things that is certainly on our radar to look at how we can start incorporating that. I think one of the challenges that we have is that if we are not prepared to maintain pervious parking, it becomes impervious parking very quickly and very expensively. So as we look and evaluate that, I think we're going to want to look at specialized equipment and other things that we may need to take on as a part of that. But right now, the parking, we're not talking about a lot of surface parking on the projects that we've approved recently. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. I will officially close the hearing on the Lanes at Mission Bowl Phase Two Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan and the Split of Tiff District Number Three B. And as Laura mentioned, this item will be discussed later in the agenda as an action item.
And I might just interject there that the ordinance itself will require a super majority of the council, so six votes in order to adopt that ordinance this evening.
Thank you. All right. We will now move to item three in our agenda this evening, the issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds. So now we will move to item four, which is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has two items tonight. The City Council committees met on September 4th and fully discussed out each of these items. And then the committees agreed that these items were routine enough to be listed on our consent agenda. And that's why they were able to be approved tonight under a single motion. However, if a council member or a member of the public would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Council President, I move the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed items 4A and 4B.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. So any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Folks, will you please call the vote?
Ryan.
Hi.
Houghton.
Hi.
Chelsea.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
Frank.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Motion case.
Thank you. We will now move into item five, public comments. And just a reminder for the public, this is your chance to make a comment on an item that is not listed on the consent or that is not listed on our agenda. This is your time. If you are participating through Zoom, please add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud. And please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in this meeting. Do we have any comments this evening from the public? All right. Seeing none, we will move to item six, our action items this evening. We do have two items this evening coming forward from our planning commission. The first is for the consideration of an ordinance incorporating the Mission Connections Plan 2024 into the Tomorrow Together 2020-2040 Comprehensive Plan. And Ms. Caneller, I see you're at the podium already. Will you please provide your report?
Thank you. Yeah, so the first item for your consideration is the Mission Connections Plan. This is an active transportation network that supports and encourages people to walk, bike, and use other means of active transportation throughout the city. The most recent citizen survey conducted in 2021 reported that 75% of respondents ranked the walkability and accessibility of Mission as an important or very important factor. And when asked to rank actions the City Council or the city could take, 69% of respondents ranked build a walkable and bikeable community as strongly agree or agree with that statement. The recently adopted Tomorrow Together 2040 Mission Comprehensive Plan, I'm going to say that a couple of times, and that's, that's a lot, has several recommendations in support of creating and maintaining an active transportation network in Mission. You can find these recommendations in the Parks and Recreation Chapter, the Transportation and Mobility Chapter specifically there to add and improve key crossing locations across major arterial roadways, as well as to develop flexible policies that allow the city to adapt to future needs within prepared criteria regarding safety, efficiency, and access. To that end, the city was able to obtain a Planning Sustainable Places grant through MARK, through the Mid-America Regional Council, last summer for the development of a comprehensive citywide bike ped study. RDG Planning and Design served as the lead consultant on the project, and they did extensive field research in the community and conducted public outreach and engagement, including engaging a steering committee made up of community stakeholders, members of the City Council, Planning Commission, Sustainability Commission, and Parks and Recreation and Tree Commission, as well as business owners and active bicyclists and walkers that are residents in the community. A community charrette was held as, as a interactive event in two sessions that were both very well attended. Several one-on-one sessions were also held with community leaders. And RDG also conducted a number of workshops with city staff, planning, planning staff from neighboring communities as well, and representatives from KDOT. There was a final community open house in April of 2024, which recommended, those recommendations were presented to the community at large and input was gathered there. The final plan outlines 15 individual routes that are connected throughout Mission. And there are also recommendations for wayfinding and policies to enhance the network. As a supplement to this plan, we have a, something that I wanted to include in the scope of the project for the consultant to do for us was to create something called a story map. And this is its own website, and it's a very interactive way to display this project that allows the public to be able to see it. It's linked on our current project's webpage, by the way. If you want to go there and, and find that there, that's where you can find it. But this Mission Connections Plan has several elements here, seven separate sections. Starting first with the purpose, well, that's eight actually, current conditions is first. And so if you click on current conditions, it'll go straight there and you can scroll through and see what traffic patterns are like, crash data, et cetera, as you scroll through. Interactively, those maps update as you work through the site. And then you can go to community engagement and see what all we did for community engagement with the public and stakeholders. And that's a terrible picture, but ignore that. It just keeps scrolling. And, you know, just all the different interactive maps and surveys that we did are included on the site there. It also includes the, then, you know, after all that community engagement, we had the recommendations for the mission network. And so these are all the routes that are included. If you go up, that should kind of talk a little, oh, it just gives you a paragraph about that and then moves into the vocabulary that is part of each one of these facilities that are recommended, recommended in the plan. And so things like trails, bike lanes, you know, what's a shared use path, those kinds of things. And then we get to the mission network itself, which is, let's see, how many routes? 15 individual routes? As you keep going, keep going. So it must be updating the map on the side. Maybe your internet's a little slow. But there's a map on the side that shows all of these individual routes and they're color-coded by the route name and numbers on there. It should be updating, but it worked earlier. So if you keep scrolling through there, we, each one of these routes is actually separated out into different sectors to give you kind of a, you know, you got a broad view of all the routes. And then each of these sectors are different areas in town where these routes are kind of specifically called out and what kind of facilities can be on those routes. So this is also very interactive. It shows you an overview map there on the left, and then what's on the right is your detailed page for that. And so there's several sectors there as well. And then we get to the implementation part, and we have three phases for implementation. Phase one, phase two, and phase three. These, phase one are more short-term things that we can do and maybe easier kind of low-hanging fruit sometimes or more prioritized parts of the project that we'd like to see happen sooner rather than later. For future utilization of this whole site, I'd like to see that my intent for this was that we can use this as we go ahead and implement these routes and the improvements along these routes as we go. So working with Public Works and Parks and Rec to, to update this as we go. And so it's a good public engagement tool to be transparent with the public about what we're doing and when, and, you know, how we're going about implementation of this plan, which, you know, we're recommending tonight, staff is recommending that the council adopt as an appendix to the Tomorrow Together Plan. I think that's all I have on that one. Do you want me to continue on with the next piece, or do you want to contemplate that or ask questions about that?
I think we have to vote on this.
Yeah, you do have to vote on that one. Okay.
And then we'll move to the next item. So thank you for that. Is there, we'll open the floor now for council discussion. Is there any council discussion on this item?
Just that this is really cool.
Yeah, the story map is something that I've always wanted to be able to do. I've never done one, but kind of played around with it, and they're really cool pieces of, you know, kind of nifty tool that you can use to see what a plan is. And it's a little bit more interesting than just flipping through a PDF or turning pages. So.
It's very interactive. I love how there's words, and then it changes the picture. And yeah, it's very cool. Playing with the now.
RDG did it all, but we'll just, we'll be able to update it and edit as needed. And hopefully that map will come up later that we didn't get to see.
I think I did skip a public comment following this presentation. Was there any public comment first before we open it up for council? Seeing none. Okay, Councilmember Chelsea.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, so this is certainly an issue near and dear to my heart. My daughter and I ride, ride on our bike all over the place. I take her to daycare on the bike a lot. But this is walkability and, and the ability to sort of move around Mission and get to everything you need to relatively quickly and in a sort of pleasant way, not necessarily needing a car. That's one of the things that attracted my wife and I to Mission in the first place. So I just wanted to take a minute to say this is the culmination of a very exciting project for me and one that I think has a lot of potential to transform Mission and open up possibilities for getting around without a car that, that maybe aren't there for people who aren't as confident or strong on cycling or who rely on our sidewalks and aren't necessarily always there or in good condition all the time. So I'm really excited about this. Looking forward to seeing implementation begin and appreciate all the hard work on this from everybody.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I appreciate the phased breakout as well. I think that's always the first question when we see something like this, why, what can be done now, medium and long term? So just having those transparent and upfront for the public, that's always a good, a good move. So. Additional comments on this? All right. I will now entertain a motion on the ordinance incorporating the Mission Connections Plan 2024 into the Tomorrow Together 2040 Mission Comprehensive Plan.
Council President, I move the City Council adopt an ordinance amending the Tomorrow Together 2024 Mission Comprehensive Plan to include the recently completed Mission Connections Plan 2024 as appendix C.
Second.
All right. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Folks, will you please call the roll?
Ryan.
Hi.
Hi.
Woodley House.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Hi.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Mission carries.
All right, thank you. And now we will move to item six A. Uh, we will now, or six B. We will now talk through the consideration of an ordinance incorporating the Rock Creek Corridor Improvements Plan into the tomorrow together twenty forty comprehensive plan as well. Ms. Keller, will you please provide your report?
Sure, the um, Rock Creek Trail, as all of you know already, is, you know, one of Mission's most treasured assets. Um, and this was really um, a really fun project to work on because I walk the trail a lot too and 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 use it, just like many of the residents here. So um, you know, it's, it's many res- residents utilize it for not just recreation, but to get to shopping, to get to neighborhoods, to get to parks. Um, so you know, it was kind of a vision of mine, one of the first day that I came on board and Brian was taking me around and touring the city that you know, there were improvements that we could make, some of the open green spaces, for instance, and um, just beautifying um, creating a place along this trail. Um, and and you know, as the comprehensive plan has several recommendations in support of these ideas that came out of this plan um, to to implement improvements. Um, for one, you know, the natural features and environment chapter uh, states that um, we should continue to invest in the Rock Creek flood abatement and stormwater infrastructure, priortori- and prioritize green solutions. Um, as well as to maintain, oh, and the Parks and Rec chapter states that we should maintain natural features to enhance the cha- character of the built environment, promote neighborhood stability, public health and safety, and provide for outdoor recreation and visual enjoyment. Um, additionally, and to enhance parks and recreational space. Um, so the city, again, this was the, actually, the first planning sustainable places grant that we received in the very same year as the previous plan that we just discussed. Um, and that was to explore potential improvements along the Rock Creek Corridor from Woodson to Rollin Drive. So basically, the eastern half of of our city along this corridor. Um, Wilson and Company was selected to lead a team of um, consultants for the project. Um, and I'll note too that, you know, we have a proposal out to Mid America Regional Council right now that we've actually been awarded for setting the west side of this corridor as well. So um, we'll hear more about that items are coming up soon, but um, that will be for this Rock Creek Corridor uh, trail and uh, Martway as well. So uh, that aside, um, the uh, consultants made up a uh, steering committee of members from the city council, again, planning commission, sustainability commission, parks and rec and tree commission, um, as well as business owners and representative, uh, representatives of Mission Project, which I believe are some of the, whom are here tonight. Um, and met several times throughout this, the process to hear from everyone, um, to evaluate concepts and provide additional input. Uh, the project formally kicked off with a walk and roll event, which was really fun. We had a really great turnout for that. Uh, we had over forty people come to that event, and it was really um, a lot of fun to see people walking or riding their bikes along the trail and just giving the consultants uh, feedback about what they thought was great about it and also what could be improved. Um, there was also, um, and that was led, by the way, by Bike Block KC. There was an online survey that was also utilized to gather additional input, and the consultant team took all of that information and developed conceptual ideas that were presented at a public open house in November of twenty twenty-three. Um, and that was to develop a final design comp- concept that was presented to city council in March of twenty twenty-four, and then the planning commission in June of twenty twenty-four. And the final plan outlines an enhanced trail experience from Woodson to Noll uh, with additional green space, seating areas, native vegetation, lighting, and public art. Um, additionally, the mission market was re-envisioned as an opportunity for placemaking, a permanent structure to support market activities during the summer months, and then just public space and all the rest of the other months throughout the year. Green space for community activities and a water feature. Uh, the plan also proposes narrowing Martway from Noll to Roland Drive on the city's east side and providing a cycle track on the north side of Martway. Um, and maintaining the ten-foot trail uh, that is part of the Rock Creek Trail Experience there for pedestrians on the south side. So the plan is the foundation for further study and design once improvements to the corridor are implemented in the next few years and funding becomes available. So um, incorporating the plan into the comprehensive plan will ensure that it remains an active plan and that uh, as public and private improvements are made and and the area is further developed. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will open it up for council discussion. Anyone on council? Yes, council member Green.
I just, I just want to thank whoever is applying for grants across the board because I like using other people's money to get, to gain insight into what commission really stands for, and those grants are so expensive if we don't take advantage of them, and I appreciate who's ever writing them, that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Yes, council member.
I just wanted to say that the uh, the way that you gave so many different opportunities for community engagement really made this uh, I think added so much value to this and made it so much fun. I went on the walk and roll, and it was super fun.
I think our consultants were really great on this, too. We had, we had a great group of folks, a great team.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we will now, I will now entertain a motion for the Rock Creek Corridor Improvements Plan to be incorporated into the tomorrow together twenty forty comprehensive plan.
Council president, I move the city council adopt an ordinance amending the tomorrow together twenty forty mission comprehensive plan to include the recently completed Rock Creek Improvements Plan as appendix D.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Fokes, will you please call the roll?
Loudon?
Yes.
Josie?
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Woodley House?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Mission carries.
All right, thank you. We will now move into our committee reports. Council member Schmidt, would you please provide a report from the finance and administration committee?
I will, thank you. Uh, the finance and administration committee met on September fourth and considered four items. The meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. An ordinance establishing TIF's, TIF District Three C approving redevelopment project plan for the same and approving execution of a redevelopment agreement with Mission Bowl Apartments LLC. Resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for the lanes at Mission Bowl Phase Two Project, and an ordinance authorizing the issuance of IRBs for Phase One of the Mission Bowl Apartments will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Uh, item seven A, the ordinance establishing TIF District Three C approving a redevelopment project planned for the same and approving execution of a redevelopment agreement with Mission Bowl Apartments LLC. In twenty twenty, Sunflower Development Group received approval for the construction of a five-story, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-unit multifamily housing development on the side of the mission, the former Mission Bowl at five-three-nine-nine Martway. Sunflower also received approval for tax increment financing TIF incentives through a negotiated redevelopment agreement based in large part on the developer's willingness to dedicate twenty percent of the units as attainable housing for the twenty-year TIF term. Achieve L- lead certif- uh, achieve lead certification silver for the project and not request one-hundred percent for the, of the increment, but to share on a sliding scale, um, but to share on a sliding scale. In twenty twenty-three, Sunflower advised the city of their interest in a Phase Two project immediately to the east of Phase One. They submitted a preliminary development plan for the Phase Two project that included a five-story apartment building, four stories on top of a one-story podium parking structure, within ninety-six apartment units. Approximately twenty percent of the units would be two-bedroom, with the remaining being a combination of one-bedroom and studio. The plan also included a seventeen-hundred-fifty-square-foot retail space on the ground floor in the northwest corner. The PDP was approved by both the planning commission and the council in twenty twenty-three. At the time, the developer initiated the planning discussions for Phase Two. They also signaled their intentions to apply for TIF incentives for this second phase and preliminarily proposed the same terms negotiated in the Phase Two agreement. One moment. This one's long. In June, the planning commissions found the TIF redevelopment project plan in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. The council approved resolution number one-one-eight-seven, which called public hearings for the division of the Rock Creek Redevelopment District Number Three B into a second district and to consider the tax increment financing redevelopment project plan. The public hearings were opened at, on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four during the city council meeting, at which time the council heard presentations from the developer, the city's financial advisor, and the city's bond council, and took comments from the public. The public hearing was then continued to tonight's meeting. The city's financial advisor, Bruce Kimmel, has provided analysis that suggests the project would likely not happen but for the approval of the TIF and sales tax exemption. If the ordinance is approved, the twenty-year TIF clock for redevelopment District Number Three C would begin upon publication. The redevelopment agreement is the document which captures all of the negotiated deal points of a project and serves as the formal contract between the developer and the city. The redevelopment agreement prepared by Kevin Wimpy, Wimp? Wimpy, Wimpy, thank you, of Gilmore and Bell PC captures and articulates the expectations for the project. Some highlights include the requirements to commence developer construction by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five with a project completion date by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Affordable housing requirements for twenty years after project completion for nineteen units at sixty percent AMI for the region, annual reporting requirements, and specific minimums for one and two-bedroom units. Units located proportionally throughout the building, and shall be equivalent to market rate units. Additionally, the agreement includes the requirements that the project will obtain at least a lead silver certification. Council president, I move the city council approve the ordinance, one, dividing Rock Creek Development District Number Three B into two redevelopment districts. Two, adopting a redevelopment project plan for redevelopment District Number Three C. And three, approving the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Mission Bowl Apartments LLC.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, thank you, council president. So uh, early on, I, I got myself involved with the, the phase one of this project as I'm sure the developer remembers me making phone calls and and wanting to to see what was going on with that property. Um, I, I was excited about that project, and I'm excited about this project for similar reasons. Um, I think this is a, a part of mission that really deserves some development and some, some residents uh, moving in, bringing, bringing life to some of the, the shops that um, have had four lease signs in the windows for a while. Um, but you know, I think these are parcels that are relatively difficult to develop. Um, you know, we have some floodplain issues despite the work that's been done back there. And uh, we continue to see, you know, old abandoned utility lines and things like that. So happy to see us uh, again, basically same exact deal as last time, working with this developer to get uh, to get some more um, badly-needed residential here um, near Johnson Drive, near the core of the city.
Yes, council member Green.
Just for clarity of the, the language within the document, we go back, we've gone back and forth between affordable and attainable, and I'd like to be real clear because we came back from attainable back to affordable again, and I want to ensure that those terms meet the needs of each other. Are they exactly the same? Or?
It's us getting used to being consistent. I think our preferred term is attainable housing.
So should we change the one in this from affordable to attainable? Last paragraph?
We'll ma- we'll reflect it as attainable housing uh, in the minutes for the meeting.
Yeah, and just on the heels of council member Josie's comments, I've found this developer to be really a good faith person, you know, entity to work with. This is an exciting project. You know, every time we go down there, seeing a little more of that completed each time, it really fits in with the neighborhood. You know, it was a creative project originally. It wasn't necessarily a site like Ben said that you would anticipate something there, and so I just want to applaud their efforts, too, and thank you for being here. Uh, certainly a, a positive that we are fortunate to have in the city and something that I'm certainly proud of so far in my tenure here on, on council, so. All right, Ms. Fokes, would you please call roll? Or please call the vote?
Josie?
Hi.
Loudon?
Woodley House?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven B, the resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for the lanes at Mission Bowl Phase Two Project. In addition to the request for tax increment financing, the developer has also submitted a formal application to request the issuance of IRBs for the sole purpose of a sales tax exemption on construction materials. The city's bond council, Gilmore and Bell, has prepared a resolution which establishes the intent and authority of the city to proceed with the transaction. The IRBs and the associated interests shall be special, limited obligations of the city payable solely out of the amounts derived by the city under a lease agreement. The bonds are not a general obligation of the city and are not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. The bonds are not payable in any manner by taxation, but shall be payable solely from the funds provided for, provided for in the indenture. The resolution anticipates the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed two hundred, not to exceed twenty-two million dollars. The issuance of the bond shall not directly, indirectly, or contingently obligate the city, the state, or any other political subdivision thereof to levy any form of taxation or to make any appropriation for their payment. The city is in no way responsible for the repayment of these bonds. Council president, I move the city council approve the resolution establishing the intent and authority of the city to issue resid- to issue industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-two million dollars to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping multiple facilities for the lanes at Mission Bowl Phase Two, a project for the benefit of Mission Bowl Apartments LLC.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Fokes, will you please call the vote?
Green?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Allen?
Hi.
Woodley House?
Hi.
And Brian, before you begin, and item seven C, I believe uh, Laura would like to add a little bit of context around this one.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I failed to correct it earlier today, but there's, in the motion uh, the amount of the IRB should actually be twenty million, not thirty million as indicated there. Um, that was a carryover that we didn't get correct, so that has been, and I just confirmed that with our bond council. So when we get to that point, if you could just replace thirty million with twenty million, I would appreciate it.
I will, just a small matter of twenty or ten million dollars.
Got it. Thank you for that correction. Um, which does bring us then to item seven C. The ordinance authorizing issuance of IRBs Phase One Mission Bowl Apartments. The redevelopment agreement for Phase One of the Lanes at Mission Bowl Project was approved in December twenty twenty. It committed the city to issue industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, for the project. The IRBs would allow the developer to secure a sales tax exemption on certain construction materials and supplies. The city council passed resolution one-zero-six-six on December sixteenth, twenty twenty, establishing the intent and authority to issue the IRBs. And the developer is now ready to move forward to issue those IRBs. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of the taxable industrial revenue bonds. The ordinance authorizes funds to be used for acquiring, purchasing, constructing, and equipping the project, funds to pay a portion of the costs associated with issuing the bonds, the city to execute any and all documents necessary in connection with the issuance of said bonds. The RR- IRBs and the associated interests shall be special, limited obligations of the city payable solely out of the amounts derived by the city under a lease agreement. The bonds are not a general obligation of the city and are not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. The bonds are not payable in any manner by taxation, but shall be payable solely from the funds provided for in the indenture. The issuance of the bond shall not directly, indirectly, or contingently obligate the city, the state, or any other political subdivision thereof to levy any form of taxation or to make any appropriation for their payment. The developer will be responsible for reimbursing all costs incurred by the city in connection with the IRBs. Council president, I move the city council approve the ordinance establishing the intent and authority of the city to issue industrial revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed twenty million dollars to finance the cost of acquiring, purchasing, constructing, installing, and equipping commercial facilities, including land, buildings, structures, improvements, fixtures, machinery, and equipment for the benefit of Mission Bowl Apartments LLC, its successors, uh, and assigns in connection with Phase One of the Lanes at Mission Bowl Project.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Fokes, will you please call the vote?
Schmidt?
Hi.
Green?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Woodley House?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
She carries.
All right, thank you. We will now move into item eight, unfinished business. Or I'm sorry, there were no more items from the Community Development Committee, so we will not have a report from the Community Development Committee. So now we will move into unfinished business. Item eight tonight. There is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anything have, does anyone on the council have anything they'd like to share regarding this item, too? Does anyone on the council have anything they'd like to share regarding this item too? Seeing none. Oh, yes, Councilmember Josie.
Uh, just mentioned this to Laura earlier today, but um, I, I've been. Riding around, walking around, taking a look at the projects we have underway. Um, we've got the, the, obviously the Lanes at Mission Bowl and. We've got the townhomes over behind the UPS store there and, and the uh. The apartments um at fifty-eighth and Knoll that, that have broken ground and they're, they're doing the ground, uh, foundation work over there. Um, or the earthwork anyway. Uh, it's, it's really exciting to watch. It's been, it's really fantastic to see those townhomes coming together. Um, they're looking, looking really nice. Um, and, and it's some exciting changes to some, some parcels that um really haven't been doing much lately. So happy to see all that happening.
Yes, and just to clarify, now we will move into the comments from the City Council. So if anyone else has other. Yes, Councilmember.
Fifty-Fifth Street is almost done and it's so exciting.
Yes.
I'd just like to say thanks to Penn and all his folks for the twenty-fifth anniversary and the sustainability and everything. You guys did a great job and. I've heard great comments from people in the community, so good work.
Yeah, I, I actually have something to share too. I have signed up for the Citizens Academy with the Police Department. And this is week three. I was unable to make week two. But just from the first session, it was a wonderful experience. I have a ride-along scheduled. With one of our officers in October that I'm looking forward to. And I would highly encourage uh everyone on the body to do this class if you haven't done it. Uh, for future years because it's just really illuminating experience, you know. Revealing shares a lot about uh what, what our police uh department goes through and what they face every day. So. Just it's, it's been a nice experience so far. I'm looking forward to jumping back in and having our next session here on Thursday, so. Yes.
A couple of things. Uh, Rushton will hold an open house tomorrow afternoon from two to four. If anybody, excuse me, it's from five to seven, my fault. Um, anybody wants to go Rushton, if you haven't gotten an opportunity to look at that school yet, it's just an A-one job. It's beautiful. And I think it, it just bring in a livelihood to all the students that are going there. They're excited to walk through the halls and everything and the teachers. All of them are giving such good feedback about the design and everything that was put forward in that project. Um, wanted to also mention, uh, I am sitting on the Solid Waste Commission for Johnson County and we had a meeting last week. Some really exciting news for us techies. Um, they had somebody do a presentation on uh. A remediation process. It's been patented by a company. That actually takes sludge and moves it to energy without using a methane gas process. Anyway, I have the presentation. I planned on giving it to the Sustainability Commission and letting them look at it. If so, PFAS is number one on my energy on my national committee. That's their number one priority. So thought that was really interesting. And as it relates to PFAS, I got something in the mail on PFAS litigation. They're already attorneys out there trying to get on board. And with working on PFAS litigation. So it's, it's kind of an interesting thing for that compound. Um, one other thing, I'd like to, if possible, work with you, Dan, to get another traffic metering on rigs again. People are flying down that street and I'm worried somebody's going to get hurt. Thanks.
Any more comments from council here? All right. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, before I forget, um, there'll be a Word Four meeting that I'll be hosting on October tenth. At seven o'clock, so I'm looking forward to seeing folks there.
All right.
Uh, I assume at the community center.
Okay, we will now move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of our boards, commissions, and committees. First will be the Sustainability Commission with Councilmember Loudon and myself. I will just kick it off and say that we had a really lively, fun Sustainability Commission meeting, I guess a couple of weeks back. And we did battery sorting for a solid hour or so before we all met. And if you aren't familiar with our Sustainability Commission Battery Sorting Project, they take. Used batteries of various sizes, whether, you know, ranging from the smallest little. Button battery to AAA batteries to lithium batteries that cl- you know, clamp on to drills and uh electrical equipment. And that was. All collected and uh sorted diligently by the, by the members. Justin was there too, uh, contributing, so. That was really fun and interesting to learn about how that process works. And then uh John Arnett on the commission takes those batteries. And ships them off to a facility that then separates them out further. So. That was uh, you know, definitely keep a spare bag at home with your batteries that, and don't throw those away in the, in the, in the landfill because we do. Have a, a way to be able to dispose of those correctly. And I think we've now saved close to three tons in the entirety of this program from going to the landfill of batteries, which is a pretty exciting amount. So. Sorry, Leah, if you were going to steal, if, if I stole your thunder on that one, but that was.
All. It was, it was interesting and it is one of those labor-intensive. Things that, you know, if, if the Sustainability uh Commission didn't do it, it would be hard to find a, a home for that sort of work, but it's important work and, and it's really fairly easy. Um, I, the Sustainability uh Commission is excited about the collaboration with PRT and the T, the Tree Drive, Tree Yourself. Um, which I hope is going well. Um, the Go Green Environmental Fair was this past Saturday and it was amazing. There were so many vendors and, and participants and, and people who came. Um, I, it was a great success as it always is. So I'm, I'm excited to do it again next year.
All right, next are councilmembers Crean and Schmidt for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
Um, Councilmember Schmidt was on travel for business, so he was not able to attend. Um, a couple of the issues that came up were the opportunity to look at a dog park in Mission. And now potentially Roland Park is also looking at a dog park. And I would let Penn expand on that relative to what you know about. The discussions within Roland Park. Also, the uh oak wilt issue in Mill Haven was discussed and, and Penn went through it. Uh, diagnostically and kind of talked about what the implications were for the, the oak wilt. So I can have him expand on that.
Thanks, Debbie. So uh.
I'll save you the oak wilt because um Brian has drafted a letter. Um, which will share out for all of you, um, that will go out, that will provide some additional information on that, so.
Yeah, in terms of uh Roland Park's search for a potential dog park. We've uh, we've, we know as much as the public knows that they're, um, they've got a group that's interested in hosting it within their. Uh, boundaries and uh obviously a lot of dog lovers in the region would, would hope that that happens sooner rather than later. So uh, I also shared with the PRT that um. Bar K, which has a model, you know, just outside of. KC Mo proper, um, was interested in expanding. And they did not feel like Mission is a good fit. We're a little bit too close to their existing facility. So. That's unfortunate, but uh we gave a shot there. And then update on the tree drive. We are sold out of trees. So all fifty of them. All fifty will have a home. It's great.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear an update from Councilmember Josie on the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. So um, an exciting meeting. We, we haven't met in a little while, but um. I'm certainly excited about the issue we have coming up for October. We have uh. A theme of women-owned, women-led businesses and, and women leadership in general. And um, it was really exciting to see just really how, how much we could pack in there because there are so many great examples in the community. So um, I invite you all to look out for that, uh, that issue coming up here towards the end of September, early October. Um, that's going to be uh ju- just amazingly filled with, with good examples of women leadership and women-owned businesses. As well as um, a lot of good info about things coming up like um. Uh, let's see, our, our October events, uh, the um spooky walk, um. Holiday lights and festive sites and several other. Um, upcoming events and, and points of interest, election information, um, and a bit about the, the food pantry. So. That's really exciting. Um, production timing means that the, the, the next issue after that will be early in twenty-twenty-five. And we are looking at a theme that's related to sort of year in review and, and framing all of the wonderful things that have been done. Uh, in twenty-twenty-four. And I think as you sit back and reflect on everything that's happened in Mission in twenty-twenty-four, there's, there's quite a lot to, to look back on. Um, Laura, did you have anything to add? Awesome. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. And then finally, we'll have Councilmember Carpenter Davis discussing the Family Adoption Committee.
Well, the Family Adoption Committee met September fifth and um, the committee had solicited some input from the social workers that, in the schools that we serve as part of the. Mission Family Adoption Program. And so we got that feedback and we're adding a social worker to our committee. To better, to better form of what we should do for the families as things, as needs change and families change and, and such. So we're meeting in a, I guess, next week and uh we'll be completing that. We'll be sending out an invitation to volunteer. So if you want to volunteer, you know, let us know or have somebody volunteer for their, our committee meetings, not committee meetings, but our. Our distribution in November as well as in December. And uh, I think that's it.
Right, unprompted at our, at our magazine meeting today, somebody mentioned um that they've been really impressed by that program and. And would be interested in, in keeping, in keeping some light on that as, as that uh program continues to grow and evolve. But some good feedback from the community on the, on the program.
All right, we will now move into the Mayor's Report and I do not have any items tonight in the Mayor's Report. However, Ms. Smith, do you have any items you would like to share with the council?
Um, we do have the August interim financials with Mr. Carroll will share. Robin, do you have? Biz, any business updates? Okay, and then um, I just have a couple of things once we're finished with those.
Okay. So, City Administrator's Report, I'm nothing there. And then the interim financial reports, Justin.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Um, so just for August, uh. Touching on the expenditures really are trending pretty much in line, so nothing out of the ordinary there. Um. In terms of revenues, uh, I've kind of noted a couple of times I presented this, just that we have noticed this year kind of the sales and use tax revenue slowing down. Um, that's a trend that's not unique to us either. We're seeing that regionally with a lot of the other cities and stuff is kind of my counterparts, checking in with them. But. That is a trend that unfortunately is continuing. So we are seeing that really level off compared to some robust growth we had been previously seeing. So outside of that, uh, nothing too crazy in this month's report and I'd stand for any questions.
Any questions for Justin? All right, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Next up is the business updates with Robin.
Oh, yes, thank you. So our business community has some fun events coming up this week. Um, tomorrow, the Northeast Johnson County Chamber will host a ribbon cutting at Key Salon, which is a hair extension studio. At six-zero-zero-one-A Johnson Drive, and I believe Councilmember Polting House will be there giving some remarks. Um, also tomorrow, Fiorella's Boutique will be hosting a fall open house from eleven AM to seven PM. And over the weekend on Saturday, um, the Mission Business District has um seen a revival recently and they will be hosting a fall sidewalk sale along the um. Johnson Drive Corridor. So please check those out if you have time. Thank you.
Right. The next item is Executive Session.
Hang on, really quickly, I apologize. Just two quick things. Um, we noted it on your weekly calendar on Friday, but there is no work session. Uh, next week, so we will see you at the October committee meetings, but please remember that they are the second. So it'll be October ninth instead of October second, uh, in observance of uh Rosh Hashanah, which falls on October second. And then um. On Friday from two to four PM, we'll be celebrating Danny Smith's retirement. Uh, the police department had not anticipated ninety-degree temperatures in late September. Um, so today, the chief made the decision to move that here into the council chambers instead of Anderson Park. So if you're able to join us, we will be inside where it's much cooler. And that's all I have this evening.
Sounds great. So Executive Session, we do not have a need for an executive session this evening, which brings me to adjournment. However, before we adjourn tonight, I do want to share with the public that footage from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Exactly. All right, it's been moved and seconded. This meeting is now adjourned.